Those in a kind of an organized manner. So we can get as much information out to you guys as we can get out to you. So let me, let me start with who I am and what I'm doing and what we're doing and what this is all about. So my name is Tom McGrath. I'm the founder and CEO of Rover. I've been working on this project for about six years now. My, my whole idea is with the technology we have, we should be able to double drivers' income. By eliminating wastes and inefficiencies in the system and driving more of that money back to the drivers. So about thirty years ago, I started a company called NICA. And it helped out independent contracted drivers in the courier industry. I helped them out with taxes and insurance. We did extremely well. We helped out a lot of drivers. I was very fortunate, lucky and blessed. I was able to retire from that company when I was forty-five. And now I'm looking at another opportunity to help drivers. I've looked at DoorDash, Postmates, Live, Roadie Pickup, Grubhub, all the companies in the spots. And I feel them taking ten, twenty, thirty, forty percent away from the driver is not. In my mind, it's not the right thing to do. The way we've structured and set up the platform, I want to give all the delivery money to the driver. One hundred percent of the delivery fee goes to the driver. The platform will charge the company a flat fee to join and get on to access the platform to access drivers. So the goal, the mission is to get all the drivers around the country together and organized on the same platform. So we're working through that. I've been talking to drivers all day, all week, all month, all year. We've got over thirty thousand drivers with us that are on the platform all over the country. So the, the process was first build the app. Build an app that's better than any other app out there, which we did. Unlike a lot of apps out there, instead of pick up and drop off, the app that we developed does routed work, on-demand work, hot-shot work, scheduled work. It has the ability to do scanning to scan packages. So by thirty years of experience in the delivery industry, I put into this app. What I also did or didn't do was I didn't go out and raise a bunch of money from VCs. I spent literally millions of my own dollars, my own money on building this. Because in my estimation, when you take that money from VCs, they're going to look for a return, an ROI on their investment, and that's going to come out of the driver. And I'm not looking to do that. I'm looking to do this long-term for drivers and to get drivers as much money as we can get them. So we built it. The app works nationwide. Um, we've got, as I said, over thirty thousand drivers that are on the app. We started getting customers involved with us to use the app. In Boston, in the Northeast, we started with another company that's a national company that has used us in about twenty cities around the country, and it's working nicely. And so if you look at the drivers, what my goal, what my passion is to help drivers. So I think I can help drivers. I think, I know we've been able to partner with Lloyds of London on some insurance thing. So if you get hurt, if there's a problem, we have insurance to cover that for you automatically for pennies on the dollar. The number one thing to a driver in my estimation is money. You need to make more money. If I look at Indeed and I see what drivers are getting paid, average income, if you look up Indeed right now, it's twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four dollars an hour. In my estimation, that's not enough money. You pay for your own gas, you pay for your own maintenance, tires, you're paying for everything. We need to make more money. So if we can take some technology, put it in the system that we can eliminate some costs, meaning dispatch, customer service, accounting, collecting money, we can do all that with technology. With the money that was spent before on that, I take that and I give that to the driver. So if I look at drivers that have been driving on Rover for a while, and I look at what their average trip is, they're averaging between fifty and sixty dollars an hour. So it's a lot more money. So my, my hypothesis works about getting drivers more money through technology. Here's the rub. The rub is we need to get together and be more organized. We need to get together so that there aren't um, these companies out there that in my opinion don't respect and take care of the driver as much as they should. So as we work towards that, taking care of the driver, respecting the driver, and getting the feedback from drivers is extremely important to me. I'm getting some feedback. I don't know if you guys are hearing it too. Can everybody hear me okay? Can you give me a thumbs up if you can hear me okay? Okay, so we've got the group of drivers growing every day. And what I want to do is this, I want to take, I want to take the drivers that are with us out there. And we've got enough in each county, each state and city that we, that we're really not going to let a lot more drivers in. Instead of crowdsourcing the way a lot of these other companies aren't throwing more people at it that, in my opinion, doing deliveries, doing what we do isn't for everybody. Not everybody can do this. Drivers that do it in a real good attitude or experienced, those are the drivers we're looking for to pull together. And once we are an experienced group of fleet of drivers around the country, we can deliver the last mile. We can own the last mile together if we just do a little bit of work and organize and help each other out a little bit. And what it's going to take, in my opinion, is I need your patience and time. As I said, I've been working at this for over six years. I've spent well over three and a half, four million dollars, and um, my wife is going to shoot me. She is like, are you done? I said, I'm not done yet. I have to help these drivers out one more time, double their pay. So my goal is to double your income. And I think we can, I know we can do it because I'm doing it with drivers already that are using the app. And I get feedback from those drivers all the time, and we make it better all the time. So I'm looking for, I, everybody's calling around the country saying, when are we starting in Dallas? When are we going to start in Phoenix? When are we going to start in Nashville? When are we going to start? I want to start in all those cities yesterday. I, I, I am on fire to get this done. So we need to work together. I can go out and hire a market, sales and marketing company to sales and to do that for us. If I do that, they want to take twenty or thirty percent out of your pay. Remember, I'm giving you all the money, so there's no money for anybody else. There's no money for VCs, investors. I, I'm not doing that. I put my money in because I believe in drivers. I know how hard work. I was a driver. I know what it takes to be a driver. This crowdsourcing thing of letting people just willy-nilly do deliveries does not work. I hear from companies all over the place that are using different companies that said they don't have enough drivers. Their, their drivers are not that good. Their drivers, and everybody's saying they don't have enough drivers. I'm calling BS on that. There are more drivers out there today than there have ever been at any time in the thirty years I've been in this business. The problem isn't that there aren't enough drivers. The problem is you don't treat the drivers right. Or you don't pay the drivers properly. Or you don't, there's certain things you do that turn the driver off. I hear from drivers all the time. I know it and I understand it. So, so the goal of A, making sure we pay drivers, that's important to me. So we've had a few, let me see, somebody's texting me. So um, Donna asked, raised a question. You had a question about making improvements to the payment system. Excellent question. The go, the goal, well, well, let me, let's go over the payment system first, then we'll talk about what the goal is. What we wanted to do when I built the app was the companies come in and use a credit card or ACH and pay immediately when they start asking for deliveries. Some companies did that. Not all companies did that. The ones that wanted me to bill them in a week or two weeks slowed the pay down. Because the system was set up to pay the driver in two business days. Because some of those companies were looking for an invoice, old school, they were trying to do it the old way. That would slow the business, the flow down, the cash flow down. We've improved that tremendously. We haven't fixed it one hundred percent, but we have improved it tremendously. So paying drivers, in my opinion, is the most important thing to you, to me, to us. So I'm pushing, I had a meeting today with a national company and I said, you need to pay me in advance. You need to give me money, and then you can use that as you go because I want to pay the driver. My goal is to pay the driver insta-pay. Pay them the same day, pay them in thirty minutes, forty minutes after the delivery is done. Because gas is expensive, money needs to flow very quickly today. It's not like the old days, wait a week, wait two weeks, then you get your check, then you go to the bank, then you wait for money. We can move money extremely quickly today, and I'm very confident we'll be able to achieve that. We didn't do it yet, but we are gonna do it. And I'm committed to it that we can get that cash flowing to drivers very quickly. So as I said, payment, getting the payment done right, we're working on it every day to improve it. Driver feedback, as I said, is extremely important to us, and we take that all into consideration. This isn't another app. You're not, you're not being part of another app out there. Like I said, Uber, Lyft, DoorDash, Postmates, Live, Roadie Pickup, Grubhub, yada, yada. This isn't another app. This is us. We control this. We, I want to empower the drivers. And at the end of the day, the driver, you guys, without the driver, nothing moves. Nothing gets done. I've said that on our website. I said that on different, and that's the important thing, and everybody seems to lose that in trans. All those other companies, they have excellent technology. They raise money like nobody else. They raise money like my head spins. They raise money. They look at the driver as a commodity. The driver to them, and I've talked with them, so I'll just speak frank, the driver to them is a pain in the neck. They were trying to do it with autonomous vehicles, or they were trying to do it with um, drones. In my opinion, and I'm, and I've been, spent a lot of time in Silicon Valley learning all this, that's not going to happen for a long, long time. It's going to be up to drivers to move packages. It's not just get it to the sidewalk, get it up to the third floor to the apartment. So there's additional steps that need to be taken that, we don't have robots doing that. You guys are it. You guys are doing it. So you know, I, I was a voice for drivers before, years ago, in my old company. I believe I can be a voice for you if we work together and we coordinate. And I need everybody to have a little patience. As I said, I've been at this a long time. I want everybody to make a ton of money yesterday. I want everybody to make money. That's, I know that's wicked important. I don't want to put the cart before the horse and make a mistake. Holding companies' feet to the fire on paying us in advance is a longer road. If we said, give us thirty days' credit, a lot of companies do that. It's like, no worries. Well, then there's a bank involved, then it's slung up things. Teaching these companies to do it the new way has been longer. However, what I find is when I go into a company like today and I see younger people running it, they're quicker, they're faster to learn and adapt to what I'm talking about. They pick it up and they're like, okay, we can do that. We can do, we can do an ACH. We can put some money aside. We can help. As I said, getting the driver paid is ultra-important. It's the most important thing. Or they're not going to be around. You don't pay the driver, it won't take long, drivers don't show up. So all the drivers that have been with me, I've got drivers that have been with me. I said, we have over thirty thousand drivers over six years. I've got drivers with me for six years that haven't done one package, but they understand what I'm, what we're building. And they've watched it, and I keep them in tune. So I would love for all of you to just take a little time, if you can, to hit our social media things. We didn't do a lot on social media. I didn't even look at it. I didn't care. I wasn't, I mean, I'm, I'm old, I'm over sixty, so that to me is a young man's game. But it's wicked important in business today. So I've got some people that are turning up the knobs on social media, so if you can like, share, subscribe, whatever that stuff is, if you can do that for our social media and start clicking that up, customers are going to look at our social media, and then they're going to see that. I also would like you guys to just post some selfies, pictures of you delivering, drivers delivering. And we're going to use that to show customers, these are the real drivers, really getting it done all over the country. And these are the people you're talking about. As opposed to crowdsourced where they don't know who it is, when it is, where it is, and they can't track it. So we've got to leg up on this, and we can do a much better job. With the technology we built, we can build this even faster to make it move um, quicker. So that, you know, that's a little bit of me, my background, where I come from, and what we're shooting to achieve here. So I believe we can do it together. Um, I see Williams on the call. Uh, they're uh, loving fourteen others, fifty. There's more people trying to get in. But it's important for me to share that message with you guys so that we can work together a little bit and build this and grow it together. And I think as we do that, um, and share that information, we can do some great stuff together, like every one of us buy gas, every one of us buy tires, every one of us buys a battery, every one of us has a vehicle. What if we all did that together? Think we could get a break? I think we'd get a damn discount. I did that before in my prior life with my other company, NICA, when we bought insurance. What it was costing an individual independent contractor to buy insurance, I brought that from a dollar down to ten cents. And it, it's tremendous when we put our group together, and it doesn't take a lot. I don't want to take a lot of time up of everybody. I try to make this Wednesday evening at seven o'clock for us to meet. And we're going to try to just do it consistently as we grow and build our group. But once we get the group, as we built it out, it's thirty thousand. In order for new drivers to come in, two of you have to vouch for that driver to join us. It's not going to be for everybody, and some drivers, it's not for, it's not for some people. This is going to be, these are really your customers you have to take care of. And they have to take care of you. And I'll hold their feet to the fire on the payment, making sure we maximize how much money we get. But as, as far as executing the deliveries and service, that's got to be up to you guys. And I could tell you hundreds of stories of drivers that I've spoken to that go the extra mile and take care of the, the um, the, the customers. We had an issue this morning, just to try to be as open and frank and honest as I can. We had an issue this morning at ten o'clock where we had a problem with the app. Some drivers um, actually, most of the drivers were cool, like, okay, there's an issue with the app. They contacted us. We said, we're working on it. Two drivers freaked out. And I'm like, hey, this isn't for you. If you're going to freak out every time something goes wrong, I, I, I don't want, I, I'm sorry. I need people that are going to work with us and respect each other and not just look to scream at us because there's an issue. And then I want more money. Well, as I said, that, that's not going to help. If, if we can just get organized together, coordinate together, we, I will make sure we move this extremely, as quickly as we can. Between now and the end of the year, we're looking to ramp up with additional business, and it's all about business. So it's seven twenty, it's twenty minutes into my talk. The last ten minutes, I just want to spend with you guys and say this. I shared a QR code with you guys. If you, if you saw, do you have a, you know, if you saw the QR code, can you give me a raising hand or thumbs up? Did you see the QR code? Anybody see that? Yep. Alright, alright. So that QR code was helped to, instead of going out to a sales and marketing company for us to share that with customers that you're out doing deliveries for right now that can turn them on to Rover. Because if you're out doing a delivery right now for a customer through some other entity, they're taking a percentage away from you. I know that on Rover, you can make more money if they use Rover. So if we can share that QR code with, let me see, somebody else is trying to chime in with me here. Sorry. Okay, I'm sorry. People are asking me questions while we're talking too. Um, and I got other people on Zoom trying to cut in as well. So that QR code, if you can share that with managers, store, anybody that you think can call a shot and push business our way, share that, and then through the app, send me any information, I'll follow up, or we will follow up us, and we'll go after them to try to pull them on in your area. So as long as there are drivers in a city, in an area, we should be able to grow that area fairly quickly. Right now, uh, we, we've started with Boston. I'm going to focus on Boston because I want to get that up to secure, to support all the drivers in Boston. And we're going to grow out from there to the other cities. With these two other companies that are joining us right now, they're national companies. Uh, they, they have a national presence, and we can roll out in those cities around the country um, with those stores, and then we can add other businesses to it. And we're delivering anything and everything, from medical, auto parts, boxes of food, flowers, you name it, we'll be able to deliver it. So I don't think there's a lot of money in delivering somebody's McDonald's hamburgers. I know it's just something there's a lot of money in it. It, it, and kind of like Walmart. Walmart, if I'm going to Walmart, I'm going because I want the best price. I'm not going to spend thirty bucks for a delivery. Which is what you got to pay. You got to pay to play, and the driver's not going to do it. I'll quickly tell you this. I met with Walmart. Walmart wanted us to do all of Walmart. They invited us in, they, they understood that we had a vast knowledge of the industry and understood the industry extremely well. They told us that we had to come in with a bid proposal. I said, the minimum bid is thirty dollars a delivery, and it goes up from there. That's it. And they came back and they said, well, two other companies came in with bids at nine dollars. I said, we're not doing that. I'm not doing that. You're not doing it. I wouldn't do it. I'm not, I'm not putting anything on you wouldn't do. They went with Roadie. They tried to intrigue me, they tried to entice me, and they said, Tommy, we're going to give you thirty million dollars to come in and do this business. Thirty million dollars. A lot of money. Look it up. They paid Roadie thirty million dollars into their company. I said, no. I said, I'm not doing it. Are you going to give me another thirty million dollars so I can subsidize the drivers to keep them up at thirty bucks? Because if it's a one-time hit, that doesn't make sense. So then I looked at it, and you watch what happens with Roadie. They started subsidizing to get those deliveries cost up to get the driver to move, because the drivers have to make money at the end of the day. So we just need to educate these customers that there's a delivery fee. Nothing is delivered for free. There's a cost and expense to it, and somebody has to pay for it. And if the company pays, great. If the customer pays, great. It doesn't matter to me who pays, but when you burn gas, that's real money. When you, when you go down the road, that's real money, and it can't be done for free. Um, I don't like talking about other companies, but I'm just going to say DoorDash lost one and a half billion dollars last year. That's how much money they lost. Not one of those other companies has made a penny. Not a penny. I'm baffled by the way that they operate. Because they raised all that dough. And I believe at the end of the day, there'll be a day of reckoning. We all remember MySpace, or you know, AOL was big, or you know, there were all these companies that came and went. And I believe the same thing is going to happen again. I'm old enough to think time will repeat itself. And the ones that are going to stay are the ones that are going to have to be making some kind of money. And if the drivers are making enough, we can do it together. So it's uh, let me see, I think there might be one or two more questions if she had for me. I don't know what that means. Let me just see if I can clarify this question. Somebody's asking a question. I think it's, it's important. I don't know how to unmute. I'm going to unmute everybody. I, I did, why don't you unmute everybody for me, please? So I don't have to go through the nonsense of figuring out how to use this thing. Oh boy. Can you guys unmute yourself?
Yep.
Yep, I'm on. Awesome. Jonathan, you had a question, right buddy?
Oh, wait, me?
Yeah, did you have a question? Somebody told me you had a question.
Oh no, I, I asked it in the chat earlier.
Okay, ask and answer?
Yep.
Thank you. Um, Black Six N.
Oh yeah, let's see, I didn't have time to change my name. Um, I kind of forgot because it's a focus and I what you were saying, but um, I was thinking about the Walmart thing too. Uh, yeah, I think, I see delivery drivers delivering Walmart packages for like a fucking change for a stop.
Yeah.
The car is full of packages, and they're rushing around.
Yeah, yeah. And, and, and let me say this, and let me say this. I've heard from other drivers that have gone out, done it, but have um, Walmart or somebody, fifteen dollars.
Fifteen dollars.
And after it was done, it was reduced to
Oh, if you do, yeah, Walmart has their own app as well. They um, they, it's tip-bating. It happens more often on Walmart app.
Yeah, yeah.
So they can remove the tip, so the tip could be fifteen dollars, but it, it has uh, it has to resolve. And they can reduce it before it resolves. So you only get the base pay. The only time they pay more for deliveries is when they finally get, when no one else will take it.
Yeah.
If you keep injecting a Walmart delivery, they'll be trying to offer it to you.
Yeah, yeah. Um, Nicola, Nicola, you got your hand up. Do you want to ask a question, buddy? Where do you go?
Sorry, that was a mistake. It was a mistake.
That's okay. Go for it, buddy. Do, oh yo, you didn't have a question inside. Does anybody else have a question for me?
Oh, I, I did have an idea, like, I know around Boston, Boston has a lot of specialty stores. Like, for example, high-end pet shops. I bet people would pay uh, the delivery fee. There's stuff like that.
Somebody came up with, somebody came up with the high-end pet shop yesterday and sent it to me. So we are following up on that one, but that's a good, good opportunity.
I mean, I, I also been looking, there seems to be uh, I was looking at who else does medical deliveries. And some of the, most of what I've seen, they pay less in uh, Rover. But I think medical is pretty big, especially in dense areas.
Yep, yep.
I think I just sent you one of those with Cineus.
Do, do you have the QR code?
Oh, I never got it.
Um, let's get you the QR code. The more we stick that in everybody's um, community, we can get more penalties on the app for everybody.
Hey, Jonathan, mute your mic, guys, buddy.
Go, go for it.
Um, I mean, this question, well, this idea isn't necessarily, I mean, it's kind of about deliveries, but it's more so like, if you, if we was to come up with an insurance company to where we can, the drivers can be insured and they could be rewarded with good driving by getting oil changes, getting the tires that you spoke about, things in that range. You see what I'm saying? Because just having them on insurance, like, let's take um, Lyft or, not Lyft, what is it called? Turo, for instance. If somebody wants a car from you, they automatically get insurance. So if we was able to somehow ensure the drivers and reward them for good driving, you know, with the company, I don't know if you think that'd be a good idea, best on. What'd you think?
I like it. I think that's a good idea. Look, we started with uh, Lloyds of London thirty years ago when I did insurance for drivers. If they got hurt, I, we called it occupational accident insurance. If you guys got hurt, you were covered. Um, we got the incel program for, how, how many of you are driving around with private passenger policies as opposed to commercial? You, you got private passenger? Because it's, because it's cheaper.
It is, yeah, because commercial is like a thousand a month.
Yeah.
Oh, that reminds me, um, sorry.
Go ahead.
Um, there was a company that uh, they didn't do, they just tracked other apps, and they did offer insurance, like extra insurance for gig workers, so like, like For like extra insurance for gig workers. So like, like you know how like some jobs will pay you if you're off duty, like injured or whatever?
Yeah.
There's actually insurance like that, but for gig workers. So if you just bought into that, they, they can see what you're doing because they, they pack your apps. They actually offer that insurance.
We, we have that already. We already, we already do that. So if anybody's driving on Rover and they get hurt, Lloyds of London has coverage for you up to a million dollars. You guys are covered.
I mean, this, this was, uh, this was, um, regardless of if you're actively, actively, actively driving or not. It was like, uh,
Yep, so we, so we have, yeah, so there's off-the-drive coverage too, but in addition to that, what, what the other insurance that Lloyds put together for us was called incel. And it'll take your private passenger policy and flip it into a commercial policy while you're doing a delivery for six pennies per mile. It's already calculated in. We already figured it out. It's the cheapest way for us to get commercial insurance. So I'm, I'm on that insurance. I'm all over it. I'm not letting anything get by us on that. But, but you're right. There's other, I don't think of everything. I'm not the smartest. But I will take into consideration, say, okay, how can we make it better? So, um,
No, I think what he was talking about is like in general, in, in, insurance in general. Like if we can get a better discount on car insurance, that's more reason to drive too.
Yeah, you mean on, you mean on your auto insurance is what you meant, right?
I think, uh, I think that's what he meant. Um, what was his name? Sorry, I didn't see. I'm driving.
To be honest, I was kind of merging the idea that I have with the idea that you were saying about the, you know, because incentivizing things like you can't think of, for one, insurance, I hate the fact that it doesn't report on your credit. So we created something that one reporter on your credit. That'll be a benefit there.
Yeah.
Two, rewarded you for your good driving, not like Allstate, but actually things that you may need. Let's say you want rims on your car or a system like, there's no type of leeway. I don't really like insurance companies for the fact that it seems like just breed. They don't give enough benefits for.
Okay.
Ask for them.
Okay, let me, let me, uh, I, I think you're right. There's a going to be, there's going to be huge opportunities for us to get buying power together after we're organized. We, we got to get our, we got to get the one-on-one basic, just basis covered and all agree that we want to do this. And get us together and if you know another driver that has experience, bring them in. If you know somebody else that you think would fit good, bring them in. Um, if, you know, we got a ton of women that are in this. When I was driving thirty years ago, Laurie was the only woman driver. I am thrilled when I meet women all day long out there driving. They kick ass. They're amazing. So I don't, when I say guys, I don't mean to be, uh, put a slide on women by any imagination at all. I think it's awesome. So I think we can do a much better job. Um, Kim, Kim, you want to ask a question? Chris, you're on mute.
Yeah, um, actually, um, you're doing some routes in Michigan, right?
Yes, doing Perfect Foods and Misfits. Yes, we are.
So I have been on, but I haven't ever seen any. How do I see the routes?
Um, I, I will.
I have a friend that I see around that introduced me to it.
Yep.
But I've never seen any routes. How do I see this?
Yeah.
Yeah, I have a answer to that.
Go ahead, Jonathan.
Uh, it's actually David. This is like my business account. So I just choose a random name. But, um, because I was actually working with them and from what I know, like this is not completely direct, but I kind of got the information. They fire their branded drivers and then they were just using us. And then they just stopped talking to us. Like they started reaching out to us. They stopped saying anything. So it's like I have this information, but from what I can tell is actually truth. They actually end up contracting with another company.
Yep, Jonathan's right. So, and, and I apologize, but you said Jonathan. Is that your name or you're just setting it up?
It's David. It's David. That's just what I put in because it's a business account.
Alright, so thank you, David. So I've been working with them on straightening that out because they did contract with another company that they're not happy with. So we have a good shot at getting that, plus all the other business back to you guys. So I'm going to stay on that, to try to bring all that business back to you guys.
Oh, I was thinking of like, uh, probably a life feature for the app. Like what if there was like hotspots or like at least, uh, give the drivers a general idea of the area they should be in if they want, uh, to pick up deliveries. Like, because like some apps will say, oh, if you stay in this area, there's an increased chance of getting a trip.
Right, I will have that. Kim, go ahead. Kim, do you have a follow-up question? Kim, a little question?
Um, just wasn't sure how I see that.
Okay, okay.
So wait, are you in, you're in Michigan?
So I'm not sure if you can hear me.
You said Abghausch.
Can you hear me okay?
I can hear you. Yep.
Okay, I agree with you, Kim, as far as it's, it is a little difficult to actually find the routes because me personally, I've done
Do they just pop up?
And I like it, but somebody called me and asked me if I want to do some, if I want to work today. And I really want something more consistent. I don't want it just somebody calling me, asking me, do I want to work today? Because obviously I want to, I want to work tomorrow too, but can you answer that for me? It's hard, like I want it consistent, but I understand really building right now. I want to be a part of that building.
Yeah, so, yeah, so, so to follow up on that, right, Kim?
I'm ready. I'll do them as many as you want.
I'm sorry? So, so, so just to follow up on that. We, we're just building this group and it's going to take a little time, but we'll work those things out before you can see them. More often on your app.
And I think that's also relying on the company itself because, uh, when I was working with imperfect foods, at first it was kind of slow because obviously we just started, but as time went on, we were like more consistent. So I think that's also like depended on like just, we starting out new and then the companies because sometimes they're still working with their drivers. And so they give them the priority and then we would get like whatever they had left. So I think it's dependent on the company and then us like organizing or whatever. Um, because like, Kim, do you stay in Michigan?
I'm in right around the Detroit area.
Okay.
Like east, west area. But I'll go anywhere. So is it where are you out of?
They're all, they're based all over the country, but they were in Detroit. They closed, they're on Detroit. They closed that Detroit. But we've got other facilities that are popping up that we're just talking with them about getting online. So that's not online yet, but I'm working on it. Lucy, Lucy, you have a question?
Not, not a second question. I just want to say that we don't, I don't see for two days no row either. And then my first one, it was in a Medmind that the pharmacy, but I don't see nothing. And not even, well, today we see one, we do it for now from, it was far from here, but I think I do it. I did it. I said Norwood.
Medmind is usually early.
Yeah, we are in the bottom area and then we supposed to get their packages for delivery in Norwood. But for two days, we don't get nothing.
Okay. I, I'll, I'll look at it, but I know Medmind it does put out routes early in the morning. And drivers, drivers do grab those early.
Yeah, 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 but, uh, we, I don't get none. I don't see nothing, nothing at all.
Okay.
I don't either. I don't see nothing at all.
Yeah, as I said, as I said.
At a certain time?
Yes, it's going to, as I started to say, the first thing I had to do was build the app. Now we build the driver community. Now we go get customers. Then we'll see the deliveries. This is a building process. I don't want anybody to, you know, think, oh, let me put the app on. I'm going to go make all the money. Drivers that are out there that are making money are making really good money with us. We need more customers. More customers will make more opportunities for drivers and then we can make sure drivers are getting paid properly. And not just imperfect foods or Medminders or Designer's Choice, not just those customers. Somebody else have their hand up for a question.
I have to go food shopping.
Can I go?
Yes.
Um, I, I wanted to ask, um, I, I, for a long time on app, it says, uh, instant payments. Is the instant payments ever going to come where we actually get paid the, the day after, as soon as our, our money pops up in, 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 in the, in the app? That we have money owed to us, we can get paid instantly?
Yep, good question, William. And I was talking about that earlier before you jumped on maybe, but yes. So right now, we're working with pushing the customers so that they have a kitty of money built into the system. So we can drive, pay drivers instantly. I don't have, they're not there yet. So I don't want you to think they're there. I did talk with Medminder today about that. So I am working on getting that in. Once that is in, drivers will get paid same day. But it's not done yet, but I'm working on. Okay, Nicola, you got, you got your hand up, Nicola. What do you got?
Yeah, I just wanted to let you, everybody know, like, I've been on this platform for two years and I'm still waiting patiently for the first one.
Thank you.
And I believe, I believe, uh, in order to get the customer, you got to be able to go to them and be like, hey, I have a hundred thousand drivers. And then, then they'll start, you know, start thinking. But if you could go up there and be like, hey, I have half a million people, then you might open up some eyes, you know? If you got a million people, then you're going to start really being able to do on-demand because thirty thousand is still not enough people.
You're a hundred percent right. Thank you. And I appreciate.
Hopefully, everybody here is going to wait, continue to wait.
Yeah.
We're going to have to, man. We, we need to build like a big, big, uh, I mean, there's two million semi-truck drivers. I mean, thirty thousand small package drivers is nothing.
So just to follow up on Nicole's, and I appreciate your patience and sticking it with me, just like that. But I'm going to tell you this, thirty, if you take a good driver, an experienced driver, compared to outsourced in, um, uh, what do you call it? Unexperienced drivers, uh, crowdsourced. One driver experienced does the work of ten outsourced drivers. I have the stats. I have all the information. I have that. So I'm telling you, you can outperform ten other people that don't know what they're doing when they're doing deliveries. So we have thirty thousand. In my education process to the customers, my thirty, the thirty thousand is like three hundred thousand of the work that they can do because they know what they're doing. So I'm educating them on that aspect of it as well. But trust me, I really appreciate Nicole's patience with me. As my wife has had my patience too, and her patience is running out, but we're going to make this thing and we're so close. I'm going to stay the course, get customers and there'll be enough opportunities that are popping up on your app. But I need your help too. You guys need to go out and show that QR code to customers. We all got to do our part. And go ahead, Nicole. You want to finish your question?
Um, that QR code came in through an email, correct?
Yes.
Um, if you guys could make something a little bit better, like I'm willing to print, print it out and start dishing it out, you know?
Awesome. I, I will do that.
Because that email, that email, uh, let me pull it up.
I have these, I have these cards with the QR code on them.
Yeah, because it's a very generic looking email. Like if you kind of like create like, what's that?
This is, this is a little handout. And it, and drivers can hand these out. It has the QR code on it. It has how to do a delivery. A quick, simple boom, drop these off.
Yeah, we need to have those sent to the hubs that are receiving these packages.
Alright.
That way, like, I mean, I don't want to force it, but I'll pull one that is delivery. Like I'll do too. Like tell them, look, if you're already ordering this service, give this to a friend of yours so they can start ordering this service. Because I've been noticing when I do a delivery, I'll be like, wait a minute. They must have told this person across the street that this is what they're doing. So it's, it's out of mouth. So I, I, I get what you're saying.
So that's it. I will, I'll work on a way to get these in your hands.
I agree.
Okay, I mean, hey, I got bumper stickers. Where the bumper stickers for the cars. I got things like, let, let's show the people that we're helping.
I think that we should, um, like, figure out where we all stay and get together as a group, like maybe make like a Telegram group or whatever. And then figure out what businesses, because we've probably all worked for different companies before. Figure out what businesses we've delivered to and, you know, try to go as a group to them. Because I know, uh, I forgot Nicola, Nicola mentioned like, you know, the three hundred thousand or five hundred thousand. But it is true that even though we're a smaller number, because we're quality drivers, we really do do the work of a bigger set. I used to work for a company last year and it wasn't that many drivers. And I actually did like most of the work for most of the region and we carried for like three years. So if you do have quality drivers that is, you know, getting what they need to get out of the platform and that are consistent, like, you know, it will work. I just feel like we need to, like you said, be more better organized and we can get together, figure out where we all stay and come up with some bits. Reach out. So I think that we could be able to move it on.
Okay, so I'm going to, I'm going to do that.
I would do that.
Okay, awesome. So I'm going to do this. I'll work on getting these cut handouts. I'm going to also work on getting a communication down with us better so we can communicate. And we can look at it once a week, Wednesday night at seven. I don't want to take a lot of time. I want to wrap this up very quickly. So if you have additional questions, please send them to me, email them. These people are telling me what to do, how to get the questions to me. Oh, this was excellent. It was good feedback. We can work on organizing ourselves even better and move this thing faster. I, I'm going to leave you with this. The top driver on Rover last year made a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. That's what he made.
It's city. I'll move there now.
What's that? What city?
What city? I'll move there now.
No, that, that's it. We got to do that in every city. Not one city. We got to do that nationwide. Everybody can make, we can do that together as a group. So I, I.
I wish that I can see that row.
Oh, but, oh, when someone reminded me, uh, you know, you were talking earlier, it reminded me of another company. Have you seen, um, have you heard of Macari? One of those, um, selling apps, like people sell this stuff locally?
It's like an eBay.
Like eBay?
Well, it's more like a, it's more like a modern marketplace. But I, I remember they use Uber for delivery sometimes.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, actually, if they want to build a more consistent company.
So, so, so do me a favor. Let's start with some simple stuff like liking us, subscribing, following us on the Facebook, Twitter, all that crap. So we can build those numbers. Let's get that together. That's a simple one for us. Then let's communicate through the, um, chat on now the, on the app, in the Rover app. I can control it through there. I can respond through there and we can communicate very quickly through there. I got people texting, emailing, oh, but I, it's too much. We need to coordinate this and organize it. And we're very close to doing this. So.
Excuse me, my bad. That Telegram was a good idea earlier.
Yeah.
Because it'll allow us, they have like the rooms on there where we can do voice chats. We can do video chats on there. We can do all the comments. So instead of, because I'm looking at the chats in here, like I see a lot of people have been saying they got questions and stuff. So the Telegram group would be, it's encrypted messages, but it's saving all of the conversations. So even if I miss something today, I can go in there and look at people's questions and, and the responses they got to it. And hopefully it helps me or somebody else.
Okay. Hey, um, Deidra, can you, can you text me, Deidra? Just make sure you got that Telegram information along with the rest. Just shoot me a text. So I know that that's, that's, uh, recorded and we can take action after the call. Oh, Rover News, she's telling me the email address is Rover News. So that's the email address. If you can use that email address, she's funneling that into a place where we can organize. So that's the email address. If you can use that email address, she's funneling that into a place where we can organize it, and then, then turn on the Telegram or whatever else we're doing with it. Okay? So, I think this was productive. I appreciate everybody's time. I don't wanna take everybody's, you know, take up your whole night. But I'm gonna stay focused. Like I said, it's been over six years. The next six months, we're gonna see the most movement from what I've, what we started. And the app is built, it's working, we got great drivers out there, we can bring in more drivers. Now let's go get some business for everybody, and business opportunities for everybody. Cause each one of your cities should light up. There's plenty of work in every city. We just gotta bring it on board. And when I show customers what we've done, they love this. They love communicating with the driver directly, they love, um, the, the fact that we take, that we pay everything to the driver, that hits home with a lot of them. They're like, okay, that's a social app that's making sense, that makes common sense. So, that, that's where we're at with it. Anybody have any potty, potting shots, great? Any complaints, criticism?
Whoa, I was so waiting to have that talk.
We're talking about, no. But now, um, now, we'll, we'll definitely talk about it often.
Alright, so let's plan, if you guys have time, next Wednesday, seven o'clock, we're gonna do another one. Keep growing and keep building the groups. I'm gonna get these, I'll make some action on these action items, on getting you guys information, and then we'll take it to the next step, if that makes sense to you guys. Thumbs up, get a thumbs up, um, are we okay? Awesome. It's almost eight o'clock. I have to go have dinner. My wife's gonna divorce me. Thanks, everybody.
Bye-bye.
Thanks.
Bye.
Have a great night. Drive safe.
Bye-bye. Good night.
Bye, negro.
Bye, negro. See you tomorrow if I get wrong. We were, we work where, we work over there, we, we went over there to deliver packages, we going over there to.
Carla.
I see him over there.
Yeah, Carla, thanks for joining. Thank you. You're muted.
You are mute, Carla.
Carla, you're muted.
You're muted.
Bye, thank you.
Bye.
Thank you, everybody. Good night. Bye-bye.